All right. Good morning, everyone. It is nine AM. I am going to call the meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Johnson, would you lead us today? All right, thank you. If you do have a cellphone, we would ask that you would silence it. If you need to take a call, you could step out into the hall. Also, we are streaming live on YouTube. Call for public comment. We will still allow individuals to call in. The two phone numbers are eight eight two six two four eight 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 and eight eight two six two nine seven. Those are items that are not on the agenda, just for information only. And we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Conflict of interest items, are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
All right, I might mention that Commissioner Van Duzen is not with us today and he will not be hopping on the Zoom. So, item number four, action to approve the September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one agenda.
So moved, second.
Okay, motion by Gable, second by Waterman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the September twenty first, two thousand and twenty one minutes of the Board of Cottington County Commissioners.
So long.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. All right, it is also the time and place for the public hearing. This is the final week on the two thousand and twenty two provisional budget, so I will open up the public hearing portion of that. There are any in attendance that would like to address us on the two thousand and twenty two provisional budget. Not seeing anyone, so I'll close the public hearing and then we'll open it up for discussion amongst commissioners.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think there's an amendment we need to make. So I think since...
So the proper thing to do is make a motion to approve provisional budget as published, and then you would do a subsequent motion to approve those two requests that came in after the fact.
So, so. That's all second.
Okay, motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any discussion on that?
And then we did receive two requests after I published the provisional budget. One from the Cottington County Compesca Heritage Museum in the amount of eight thousand dollars and the Mole House Association for six thousand dollars. And then after our centrally assessed utilities came in, we were also allowed to increase our property tax for paid twenty 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 two by about two, little over two thousand dollars. So that is another, I had that amount here and now I don't see it.
How much of a percentage of increase would that be over the present year?
I...
You sent that out to us, didn't you?
Seven point seven.
Seven point seven? That's the overall budget number?
That's the overall budget increase, seven point seven percent over here, an increase of one point three million dollars.
So I'll make them...
So I need a motion to increase or to add the two nonprofits plus increase our property tax by, like I said, I had that number here, I'm not sure.
So we have a motion and a second, no, we have a motion and second on the floor on to adopt the two thousand and twenty two budget and then that other one will be a subsequent one.
So we need a subsequent, yeah, I need a subsequent motion and the amount that we can re-increase our property tax originally, I had calculated nine million twenty five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, we can increase that by two thousand six hundred and forty seven with our centrally assessed valuation, so that's what...
But that, but the latter part though, would that be part of agenda item number eight?
No.
No, no, okay, so then I'll make a motion to amend the budget motion, the motion to adopt the budget.
To include those three items.
Okay, so we have a amended motion, do we have a second to that amended motion?
So be.
Okay, second by Commissioner Waterman. Any comments, questions on that portion? Because now we will vote just on the amended.
On the amendments, to add those three things.
Yep.
Yeah, just so people know, that's, those are the amounts that we did for the, those are basically the same amounts for those organizations.
There was no change from paid twenty twenty one for those two entities, correct?
Right, it's the same amount.
The, the only question that I might have is, on the two that we're dealing with that came in late, were they the same as we did last year?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Now we're back to the original, to adopt the two thousand and twenty two budget. We have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions about that?
Commissioner, I can show that chart again just a...
I wondered when you wanted to, so go ahead and do that.
Second here. And this is, I showed this briefly last week, but just to, so the public kind of understands what we're, what, what this looks like over time. Make that a little bit bigger. So with that, I changed the, I, this, if you look at, you can see, you know, the trend is generally up and usually that's driven by personnel costs. The way that budget breaks down, if you look at those three major, in each column, there's a gray, a gray block, a brown block and a blue, kind of a dark blue block. Those are the three biggies in the budget. General government, though, is really a lot of, lot of the office, basically all the offices in the courthouse, there are county offices, not court offices, so like the auditor, treasurer, register deeds, state's attorney. Oh my goodness, folks in the courthouse, basically.
All the welfare, clerical type, yes, yes.
So well, welfare is in health and health and welfare.
Yeah, welfare falls in health and welfare, but general government, and that would also mean the courthouse itself, the government buildings.
Yeah, okay, and the commission.
Public defender, state's attorney, court appointed attorneys, election budget.
Our budget, our commissioner's budget.
Yeah, there's a huge amount that comes into the, let's consider general.
And then public safety is, for the most part, the sheriff's office and the jail. It does include emergency management. Roads is, you know, the highway department. And you can see those are the three biggest sections of the, of the budget in any, in a year this year there. Each one of those is a little over four million dollars, if you were to break that down, if you look in detail. And then all the other smaller stuff, so like the, the two, the amendment we just adopted to this budget would go with that culture and recreation, which is a small portion towards the bottom. And then the overall amount, I already edited that on the slide, so now it reflects that nineteen million three hundred and seventy two thousand five hundred and forty four dollars. And that includes that, the amendment we just adopted. The other thing to highlight here, and this is a, something to keep in mind for the, for all of us, is that because our, the law requires us to estimate the revenues at ninety five percent of the budget, that requires us to apply reserves and that the intent of that, I think, from, you know, in law, is to make sure that we, you know, we don't, we don't accumulate too much in reserve. And so, but that seems to, but the good thing about that is it seems to kind of cause a natural conservatism, natural frugality.
Yes.
Because the, the yellow blocks there are what the actual expenses were for those years. And so that, that allows us to basically preserve that surplus amount or reserve. And what we have been doing over the past, most years has been applying that toward saving up for future buildings, because that's how, you know, for counties, it's not like a city or a state, it's capital improvements are hard things to do. And so we need to either save, save our reserves or we need to do an extra levy of some sort. So if you can, we want to save as much as we can to be able to do those kinds of things.
So for the two thousand and twenty two provisional budget, that amount comes to six hundred and eighty eight thousand, which we are required to use as a safety net in the event our, our revenues don't come in.
Right, yeah.
Basically, it just reverts back to surplus cash at the end of the year. We have never needed to use that. I will tell you that at our recent conference, there are auditors who would like the legislature to remove that amount. We've tried before, but have not been successful. Some counties just look, some counties look at it as a safety net, some counties look at it as an extra burden.
Yeah, I think, I think the good thing about our, our situation is we're kind of complying with that, we're kind of using it for the intended purpose, which does
Yes.
help us to be more conservative in, in this regard. So that's, that's, that's a good thing. The other thing you'll notice, obviously, that it goes up, that's mostly due to the, the compensation study. And, and, you know, people, personnel costs, you know, COLA, cost of living and insurance are the two things that drive it up year to year. If you're wondering about the jump from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen, that's the year we did, we budgeted from our reserves for the courtroom, for the additional courtroom. And so, but we still, even that year, we still saved some money from what we, we had projected. So anyway, that, just to give folks some idea of what, what goes on when we do this, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Gable, for that explanation.
A question I have for Cindy, a couple of questions. One, is this proposed budget, does this include what percent increase for the employees? Is that...
What was in the wage study?
In the wage study?
Yeah, no, I did not receive any information on what increase that would be.
That was just from the wage study?
That was just from the wage study, yes.
So it was, so we estimated, and that's a good question, Commissioner.
I mean, because, I mean, employees were spread all over that scale, it's, it's very hard to determine without looking at each individual employee, but what was it, a...
I would say that...
Hundred and eighty, was it a hundred and eighty thousand per month?
Additionally?
Additional, I, I don't remember.
I wish I remembered that, but it was, yeah, I think that would be about right, but that's just, that's just budgeting, though.
Right.
So, so, you know, that, I think one thing, you know, to look at in the future, I don't know if our, our software, or we might need, it might be helpful if we could, it'd be interesting to try to project out once, but it's kind of hard with the budget cycle to do this, is project out what the actual pay, what the actual pay and benefits would be, try to project that in more detail, but that could be, that's a very tricky thing to do.
The reason I asked the question is that, you know, as these proposed budgets came in from the department heads, you know, most of them had three percent and higher. Some had more than three percent, and you know what the number we were working with within the board here, and so I was wondering what that...
Yeah, it's going to vary by department, yeah, would vary by department. So I would say on the average, it's going to be...
Based on the longevity of employees within a certain department, yeah.
But, but on the averages, typically, year to year, we usually say, you know, budget three percent
Yes.
increase, and so it's going to be a little higher than that. I mean, that's fair to say, so that's, and that's what you're seeing there.
Well, we also budgeted more for health insurance and that came in lower, so there's an offset there, that came in lower than that, what most people budgeted for, so.
The other question that I had, Cindy, was that with this proposed budget, we're still okay with the, the limits that were allowed?
Yes, we are following the limits, we are not...
Are we, do we have any wiggle room there or is there...
Nope, and we are living exactly what the state allows us for property taxes and then the rest of our revenues, our estimated revenues based on services that we provide.
And I, I bring these questions up basically because, you know, we're looking at a seven point seven percent increase, the budget, you know, nothing, from what we are used to, that's a pretty good chunk. That's more than, more than normal and we don't want to get behind the eight ball here, we need to keep our eye on the, eye on the budget and keep things under control. Seven point seven is, I know, there's a lot of companies out there that would like to see something like that, but...
Well, and you look at, when you look at the budgets overall, most of our department had still stayed, their, their increase wasn't very large, even though they did include those wages in there, so they held tight on their budgets that way.
You would have to look at each individual budget too and see who budgeted for a project, any projects that might be coming up in two thousand and twenty two. And the department head would have reviewed that with you when they, when they reviewed their budget.
Yep, overall, most of them stayed pretty close, not too big of increases, so.
Well, the point is, is we're spending more than we're taking in to start off and, and that's what I don't like to see, you know.
And that's the way it has been for the last...
Yeah.
Yeah, you look at that, it's still...
You're right, but we, you know, this is a budget.
It's a budget.
It's a budget and like these graphs shows, we are not spending everything that we budgeted the last ten years, so.
And I think, the thing that we have to, we have to commend our department heads and our departments for always have been very, very good about working within the budget too.
And the problem is when they, when they, you know, cut back every year, eventually something's going to catch up with you that you have to have done.
Well, the, the point about what, just to comment on, you know, the, the idea, it's, the law tells us, once we, once we agree on our budget, we got it, we got to estimate our revenues lower than our budget. I mean, the law tells us to knock down five percent and estimate all the revenue, streams of revenue, and property tax is just one of those. And, and knock it down five percent and that forces you to apply your reserves. So if you don't have the reserves, you better figure something else out. I mean, that's kind of, so in a, in a way, we, we, in the way, the way the budget is put together, some of that revenue is what we have in reserve. So that's kind of, and that's the way it's designed to keep us from getting, from those numbers from getting too high, so that, and that keeps it...
Compared to other counties, we are in a stable, more stable position than some of them.
That's where we like to be, yeah. And, and just because it's in the budget, we have to understand and, and the department heads and the people in the, in the county have to understand that we don't have to spend it. I mean, because it's in the budget doesn't mean it has to be spent, you know.
And we've proven that
Yeah.
all across, from that chart that we had, we have it, so that's the goal. All right, any other comments, questions? We're ready to vote to adopt the two thousand and twenty two budget.
Okay, say one last thing, just so people know, now the next thing is going to be the levy resolution, so you'll see how much of this is actually property tax, so it's not all property tax.
All of the majority of our revenues comes from property tax, property tax and motor vehicle collections.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries, our two thousand and twenty two budget is adopted. All right then, item number eight, action to adopt a levy resolution for taxes payable in two thousand and twenty two. Cindy, you would want to explain.
So to calculate the levy, we take the amount that we are authorized to levy for tax, it's the dollar amount, which in Cottington County's case is nine million twenty eight thousand four hundred and sixty seven dollars. We divide that into the total county valuation for taxes payable in two thousand and twenty two, which I do not have that number right here. And that is how levy is calculated. So the count, the levy for paid two thousand and twenty two for county purposes only is three point zero seven two. For taxes payable this year, it was three point zero nine five. Does not mean that you're going to see a reduction in your property tax, because that is based on what your valuation did from one year to the next. So if your valuation stayed the same, you might see a reduction in the county portion, county portion only. I cannot, you know, talk to the, the school, the city or the other taxing entities, but for county port purposes, the levy this, for paid two thousand and twenty two is three point zero nine five, pay this year, three point zero seven two.
Don't spend it all in one place, everybody.
All right, so I would need a motion and a second then to...
So long.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any further comments or questions?
Just to pick up on what, what Cindy was saying, so Cindy said the phrase for county purposes, so that's, that's, so even though the county collects all the property tax to include for the school district and the cities and the townships and the townships.
We are the collector of tax.
We are the collector, so just, if you're, if you're wondering about what percentage goes to which jurisdiction, just look at your property tax bill and you'll see how it breaks down. So typically, I mean, I think the county gets in the thirty percent and the school district gets about sixty some and, you know, and then it depends on which, where you live within the county, what the rest goes to. Typically, that's just, you know, very general, so people have an idea.
Just a second and I will tell you what the total valuation is.
The school usually gets a bigger percentage.
I think that's higher than sixty.
Yeah, usually, I mean, it depends on...
Around sixty some.
It depends on the district, just depends, so.
So what we do is we take that nine million number, we divide that into two billion nine hundred and thirty nine thousand three hundred and fifty, whoops, nine, two billion, nine hundred and thirty nine million, three hundred and fifty thousand forty two dollars. That is the total value of taxable property in Cottington right now, two point nine billion. We divide our property tax number of nine million into that, that's where we get the tax levy of three point zero seven two.
Would, would it be, now this is, I'm just, you don't need to answer this question. I just, I was wondering, three point zero seven two, I'm just trying to, in my mind, think of that, would be, there'll be, actually, what, what would be the increase in the value of the county property over last year in, in terms of percentage? But that wouldn't be a number that would correlate with that at all.
No, it doesn't, yep. For, for taxes payable in two thousand and twenty two, our, our property valuation is two point nine billion. Oh, I'm sorry, last year it was two point eight.
So it did go up.
I have it in front of me, yes. Yes, we had an increase due to reap, reappraisal purposes of fifty six million and we had an increase due to addition improvement or change in use of thirty one million. So the increase due to reappraisal, fifty six million, the increase due to growth basically was thirty one million in the last year.
And when you're saying taxes and property taxes, just for clarification, this includes cities, rural, every piece of property in the county?
Yes, every piece of property within Cottington County, yes. Yeah, so the valuation afforded the county is, is the most, because we cover the entire county, whereas the valuation for the city of Watertown, they're allowed to work with just the value for the city of Watertown, which is total taxable value within the city of Watertown is one point nine billion.
And just for clarification for people that, that bought houses recently that were a hundred thousand on the market and now are hypothetically a hundred and seventy five thousand, that has something to do with these figures also.
It will, next year.
Next year.
Next year.
Next year, that's if they trigger an assessment.
Yes, yeah.
Is that correct, Luke?
He doesn't do that.
I know, it's out of your hands.
All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries.
I'm going to send around three copies of the resolution. I need to send one to the Department of Revenue, one for our resolution book and one for myself and just sign on the line where your name appears.
Um, so I may, if Jamie and Brad doesn't mind, pull Luke up and get this plat done so he can get out of here. You guys okay with that? All right, let's have Luke come up and take care of his plat resolution. Morning, Luke.
Morning, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Folks, I'll be waiting to do their report, I'll do this as quickly as I can. The, what you have in front of you right now is a flat of Jade County edition, which was essentially postponed from last meeting, because there was a little bit of discussion that needed to happen with the, with City Hall. And primarily, that discussion that needed to happen is in reference to a dashed line that you see on, on that flat drawing, if you got a copy of it. There shows a eighty foot wide easement that is forty feet on center, and for what it's worth, I should point this out, this is information, this is, thank you, this is a flat of Jade County edition in Jack County, North half, section three, and I think that's it. The, this is straight west of town, just west of, uh, three.
County Clark.
County Clark, exactly, and that, uh, to the east of Pelican Plaza, just where this is at, I mean, well, and going back to this, the reason that you were postponed was because we were trying to negotiate and figure out how that dotted line, you see that eighty foot wide easement, would be described on this piece of paper, you can see how it is described now, it's described as an easement that will be dedicated toward right of way, if and when this property gets annexed, whether it be two minutes or two hundred years, that is how that's going to be handled in the future. And basically, what we had to do was do that and then have a agreement that the city is prepared for that, to run with the land as well. So for what it's worth, from the joint jurisdiction side, the use of the property, the use of that property, as long as it stays outside of city limits, is tied to the person or entity operating that use. They have to agree to put that road in. So at some point, the city said, we're coming and you're going to put that road in. If they say no, we're not going to do that, they're not going to do the thing they want to do there anymore. So everyone's entered this thing, eyes wide open, everyone has agreed to this, how we do it, and logic space, if we're going to put it now, given that the state says, let's just leave the access at this location, we're going to put it there.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second by Gable, second by Johnson. Any other discussion? So this is the road, this over here is no longer...
Yeah, exactly, that, that was a long range plan by the city to be in the location where that border line sits, and that's why it was a big deal, because, I mean, they've been thinking about it for thirty years, so this is a big deal to move that thing, and so we did it pretty quickly too, for, from a standpoint of how long I...
This is to avoid somebody having it right down the center of the roof line.
Yeah, exactly, that, you're, you're exactly right, so that we don't block off the city's future traffic patterns, which has happened in some cases in the past.
How that approach? The approach.
The approach now will be the place where, where that road will go in the future.
Yeah, so it's going to move west.
Exactly.
No, it's staying, it's staying where it is, the, the approach is there.
Where currently is that?
Yeah, where the approach is currently at is where the road will end.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions, comments for Luke? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, Luke.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll back up to monthly report and we'll have Jamie with Emergency Management. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning.
Morning again, Jamie. My turn.
All right, good morning. Well, I'll just kind of pick up in August where I left off, I'm missing you folks on my last monthly report. On that day, I was actually at the training in Pier on an EM one oh three, which completed my series with the state and what they offered for a little training class, a lot of what entailed in that was a public assistance and mitigation staff that I got to meet from the State Office of Emergency Management and mainly the focus is how their funding works, how to apply for a lot of their funding and how the planning stages to prefer, to prepare and plan before the next disaster. It's pretty much what that entailed, got to meet some new faces, through their department heads themselves and the people that are underneath them, so that's where I was on that one. I also, moving forward, we continue to participate in a monthly community partners meeting with Commissioner Chair with Hampton and what that entails, which is our county towns or schools, assisted living centers on a Friday, when is it, the last Friday?
Second Friday.
Second Friday of the month.
Every month, yep.
And typically, what we end up with on those is topics that they give to us and on my end, we basically discuss resource and logistics and numbers and things... topics that they give to us. And on my end, we basically discuss resource and logistics and numbers and things that they're needs. So not a lot's been coming out of them lately, keeping them focused on, you know, what our drought situation, weather situations are, if there's any Department of Health needs that assisted living centers need per such, so.
And the CARES dollars is to make them aware that now that the cities were able to apply that they need to get that done quickly if they were wanting to. So yeah, it's been a really a good.
Yep. And I think it's been very resourceful for them as well. Along with that, on the week of September thirteenth through the seventeenth, we ended up hosting the South Dakota Emergency Management Association's Annual Conference, which was hosted in Watertown at the Watertown Event Center. I typically and mainly worked with their board kind of throughout the last three, four months on meeting facilities, providing sponsors and vendor names and kind of organizing their chart for their event schedule. It was a great conference. We had two full days of National Weather Service training. They offered the state side. They offered EM one oh one training to all the new people that are kind of coming along. You know, I'm finding out there's a lot of counties that a lot of those folks are only part-time or three-quarter, part-time type people, but got to meet a lot of new faces and it was a very good conference. So we've got that one under our belt. Next year, that one will move to here on, so. Oh, where was I? Uh, and just last week, we held another local emergency planning committee meeting, our L E P C. And and that we kind of voted on providing some additional funding that comes through uh my office that went towards a project for the Watertown Fire Rescue to add some more hazmat tech kids, I believe is what they called them. Some other topics and people that were there were Prairie Lakes Health, kind of same scenarios of giving us some updates on COVID numbers and things like that. Mass vaccination doesn't seem to be in their future, but we're still waiting on F D A and CDC guidance as far as booster shots and the media portrays that very well. So um, and right on into this last Sunday, I designed and conducted a county multi-agency simulated training exercise up at Punished Woman Lake in Salt Shore. Very scenario-based, performing a water rescue and recovery. A scenario-based fire that included a boat that was on the water and then ended up igniting, simulated the shoreline of trees and grass. And then and then with that, we also had a perpetrator that uh needed to be searched for in that land mass. So everything went pretty well. The reason we chose that area is communication in that salt shore area, even with state towers and things per such is a challenge, big challenge. So I kind of hope to push that in my after-action report that I'll have to fill out within the next ninety days. That'll kind of maybe focus some attention to the state on how we truly kind of are messing out on some communication channels there. If they're interested in putting a tower, but those things are very expensive. So might work on some repeater stuff with the salt shore, the volunteer fire department itself. Um, that really gave our county partners the ability to figure out what their needs and resource and what's at their fingertips and how to use them. Um, and we all came together pretty well. The incident command structure was formed. We opened an E O C with my secretary and the channel, those things, that direction. Gives us a lot of knowledge on where we need to improve. So all in all, it went very well.
You learn which hill to go to if you need to use a radio, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And you own a lot. And and one thing that's interesting, so Watertown Dispatch also played with that with us. Um, and recently I just found out about this and so did the Salt Shore Fire Chief up there. We can patch channels to our dispatch center so we can take all three of our independent frequencies and patch them with the click of a mouse and communicate effectively that direction.
But it is tough when you get up there.
We could use our our independent channel of what we call a talk-around group to speak with right our own, but then we had to have a guy positioned up on top of a hill to communicate that back.
Yeah.
So it was a great challenge. Um, you know, we tested the core capabilities of operational coordination, operational communication, and then mass search and rescue. And the end result, after about two and a half, three hours, um, it concluded and we, I think we got the end result that we're all happy with, but well, uh per se, pick it apart and critique it and show our needs of improvement. And that also meets our annually, I have to perform an actual exercise as part of our state funding that we get, that you folks sign off on for our federal dollar. So a lot of home line security type paperwork gets involved with that. So I'll finish it up. Carry on with that.
Just a quick comment, Madam Chair. It's just, you know, what's good about these things is down to the individual level, you don't want, you know, there some guy doing, you know, controlling the drone or whatever the thing. You don't want, you don't want this, you don't want a real emergency to be the first time he does that.
Right.
And so or you don't want to get rusty. So these are, this is pretty important.
It is.
Just so people understand, it's not just, you know, fun and games. It's it's serious.
Every player and evaluator that we used took note on that. So they got handed an evaluation sheet and we recommended on a lot. And then, like I said, we'll pick that apart and address the needs that are need to be improved. There is a lot of new members sometimes that play in those games. General consensus, I did ask at our debriefing in our hot washers if they liked that training and all of them kind of noted that we need more of it. So those are good scenarios to play with.
And I think it's good, the documentation of the fact of the radio service up there, you know, is not very good. So you know, maybe in the future that will help us with some state funding to try to address that.
Correct.
Because that would include dual county and Grant County too. You know, we've all kind of had those conversations already.
Yep. You know.
And I've never heard the word hot wash before.
That's one I've learned over the last year from our regional coordinators and state officers.
Comes from the, that's what we call them in the military. It comes from always, all this terminology came from the military. So.
We call that debriefing to the Navy.
Yep. I should thank the US Army for this methodology. I was there. I was when I was.
As a swag wash.
Well, then we had, we sometimes we use that word too, but that wasn't.
Sure.
That's good.
You know, and all the participants was uh Brad's office, Cotton County Sheriff's Department, Cotton County Search and Rescue, Salt Shore Volunteer Fire, my office, and then also assisting that, like I said, was Watertown Dispatch Center, but I did invite two other E M's, Grant County, attended that to evaluate the scenarios and evaluate the whole thing along with dual county. So hats off to all of them. It was pretty well a good learning lesson for each of them.
Yep, very good.
Moving to a little bit of weather, our current, you know, the last couple of weeks, if you've paid attention, our drought monitor, we have now went to the no category, which means we are in a zero drought situation. And by looks of it, uh, two weeks ago, we still have the southeastern tip in that. Now we look to be completely out of it. Um, we're showing month-to-date two point eight nine inches of moisture, uh, precip. And this just to where we sit today, uh, with more chances in the forecast. Our eight to fourteen day outlooks are still looking like above normal temperatures per se today. There are some red flag warnings out of the western half of the state. It's some southeast breezes, but they haven't been blessed with what we have. Uh, our near normal temperatures, like I said, but there's near normal precipitation outlooks along with those eight to fourteen, the outlook forecasts that National Weather Service provides.
Well, that kind of answers our item number sixteen, burn van. We can cross that off the list.
And I think, you know, honestly, I was visiting with Cindy yesterday. I think maybe I don't see the need for that if I do see alarming things with the.
And I meant to take it off, but I.
It's all good.
So kind of.
Missed it. All right.
But if we see something, I'll bring that back with me and get it on the agenda if we need to address it in situations. So.
Sounds good.
Uh, and lastly, the lovely COVID numbers are on an uptick in our county. Uh, Department Health data showing yesterday was two hundred and seventy-six active cases. Um, what I took note of, I believe those are probably Friday's numbers. Today will probably be bigger.
Give us a little more of the state. Is that a state number or?
That's that's our county number. We are actually at two hundred and seventy-six active cases. Austin Browner in that, just under three hundred. And it it's across the board in our region, what I pay attention to in our eleven county region. Three locally hospitalized. I didn't see anybody on ICU or ventilators. There was one last week for a while, but that's now disappeared. So those numbers are fluctuating, hanging in at two forty to two seventy. Those people, it's it's striking that younger generation a little harder, I think. So.
And how many pneumonia patients do we have in hospital?
Yeah, those are, those are the unknowns that I don't pay attention. I pay attention to the Department of Health dashboard and.
Understandable.
Yes, and go for mayor. I think yesterday also the state, there's only a hundred and eighty-four, and I mean that loosely, a hundred and eighty only. But out of this population of the state, there's only a hundred and eighty-four that are noted on that Department of Health website that are hospitalized. There's some large numbers in Sea Falls, the Minnehaha County side and Connecticut County side, West River are the bigger numbers. I think our Glacial Rakes region yesterday, there was twenty or twenty-one total hospitalized in this region. And that's a pretty vast here on.
Must be quite a few in Monument Monument Health because they had a thing on the radio this morning about.
Jamie, it's all right. Go ahead and say it. Get vaccinated.
Get, no, that's that's what they are telling us. And it is, you know, get your vaccinations if you're choose to do so. With that said, we're at thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-two that have been administered a vaccine in Cottington County. Uh, and that's all still based on their website shows twenty nineteen census figures. So with that said, we're looking at about forty-seven percent of our county has received an additional dose of vaccine. So that kind of sums it up for me. Is there questions on more or anything else?
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Chair, Madam Chair, could I address something that Myron asked earlier?
Sure.
Okay, Myron, um, our budget increased.
Yeah.
Fifty-three percent of that was due to personal services, which is wages, health insurance, life insurance, dental insurance, workman's comp.
Thank you.
Forty-seven percent was other items, buys, equipment, that type of thing. I forgot, it's on that spreadsheet that I gave you. If I would have just thought I could have done the math quickly, but. So the increase, that's, that's what it was.
Thank you.
What'd you say, forty? Go ahead and come on up, Brad.
Fifty-three percent of our increase for twenty twenty-two was personal services, forty-seven percent was the other.
Thank you.
But the makeup of our budget is just kind of swapped. The total budget, forty-four percent is wages, fifty-six percent is other items. So for what it's worth.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Good morning, Brad.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me swap.
No, that's good.
Heard you on the radio this morning already.
Yeah, it's been a busy morning already. All right, everybody should have a copy there. We'll get started on our monthly report. I'll start with the monthly balance sheet uh for the month of August. The bank balanced the end of August, twenty-one was eight thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. Copy fees collected were twelve dollars. Sheriff's fees collected, seven thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. And if you jump down, five hundred and fifty dollars in warrant fees reflected for a grand total of seven thousand nine hundred dollars and fifty-seven cents. Jump to the next one there. Lee's got it pulled up on the screen. So some of the sheriff's office activity in August responded to six hundred and fifty-seven cases and calls for service. Four accident reports were completed. There's a lot more accidents that we responded to. Warrants, there's a one hundred and twelve warrants served. Two hundred and eleven civil papers that were served, eight thousand two hundred and nine transport miles that were put on. Some of those transports, we we traveled to Louisiana, picked up a guy, and we just got back last week from Washington, out by Seattle. That was just last week. So put a lot of miles on, it seems like, traveling around the country, picking up offenders. So if you jump down to the jail activity, you'll see our average daily population for August was sixty-two point nine four. Little bit down from July and June, which is always a good reprieve. Last few weeks, we've actually been down around the fifty to fifty-five. So it's been down just a little bit more. Today we were up to sixty again, but it's been down a little bit. Our high ADP was seventy-three, our low was fifty-five. On the scram bracelet on twenty-four seven, we had sixteen people on the scram bracelet. The twice daily P V Ts, we have fifty-two people, seventy people on the twice weekly U As and zero people on the sweat patch for a grand total of a hundred and thirty-eight people on the twenty-four seven program. You can see that on the graph there. We got a lot more people on the twenty-four seven program than we do have in our facility, which was always a good thing. Looking at, do you think that, so that the the decrease in the daily population of, you know, people in the jail, and then you had the twenty-four seven go up to that, maybe the fact that twenty-four seven would go up to that maybe help a little bit, or it's hard, maybe hard for you to say.
That may be part of it. Be honest with you, I haven't quite figured out our jail numbers ever since COVID happened. It seems like judges have been changing their sentencings a little bit.
Yeah.
I haven't quite figured out myself kind of where all them numbers are kind of up and down the way they are. Does feel like in our jail now, our population is more of the larger crimes than what they used to be maybe five, ten years ago. Five, ten years ago, we had more alcohol issues and more meth issues and more drug stuff. Now it's starting to seem like we have a higher level of serious crimes, more serious violent crimes.
That that's really interesting. And you've been putting it on there for a long time. And there's a lot of people that looked at it and look at daily or sometimes when they're checking for somebody, multiple times daily. But it does, but it does seem that way. And I talked to you about this too. It seems like we're getting people that are a little more entrenched in their trade.
Yeah, it seems like it's like, say, a lot more violent, more serious crimes. And what Charlie was talking about, you can go to the sheriff's website and you can see the the people that are in our facility, what they're in for and what their bonds amounts are. So.
Well, right now it's good. The numbers are low with what you have going on.
Yep, I'll actually talk about that here just a little bit.
Thank you.
I'll finish up with this here. Bookings, we did two hundred and three bookings for the month of August. And you say it seems like those always kind of stay in that one ninety to two ten. So in that that area. Scroll down, it's a little bit more there, Lee. Collected some these year for the month of August and out of county contracts, we collected six thousand fifty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. Work release fees, one thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, twenty-four seven fees, we collected eight thousand three hundred and eight dollars. And scram fees, we collected two thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars. Looking at work release there, some of the numbers that we've been seeing there, around three, three people or less, seemed like that's been the average for our work release program.
These fees that Brad is talking about, those are the fees that I estimate for our revenues to offset our expenditures every year. So that's where those numbers come from.
Approximately, how many people are from out of town?
Um, it's been a lot less over the last year. I would say there's even been a couple of days where they've been all kind of county inmates. Uh, that's, we'll say sixty, all sixty were county inmates. Two or three, and maybe been averaging out of them fifty or sixty.
Well, I see your number, your revenue numbers are gone down after June.
Yep. Uh, one thing on there, like I say, Brookings County, their jail is set to be done here October, November. They're hoping to move in. And I know they're, they've extended offers out to a lot of people that we contract with too. So possible that some of them closer counties may go to Brookings instead of us, which will be a reprieve.
But the fewer out of county inmates, the less our expense, right?
Less money coming in.
Yes. Well, but it's less expenditure on our part too. The fewer inmates we have, the less expense.
Very, very minor expense changes because our staffing stays about the same.
Okay, all right.
It it more so going to be less funds coming in.
Okay.
So by losing those out of county contracts.
Brad, I, I, I don't know, I, the twenty-four seven fees and the scram fees, explain those specifically, the difference between the two.
Okay, scram is part of the twenty-four seven program. The scram I'm talking about there is it's continuous, there's a, the scram stands for something, it's continuous something ankle monitoring. That is part of the program. Some of those fees go back into the scram. So we collect those scram fees. A portion of that goes to the scram company to maintain the bracelets. A small part of that goes into the twenty-four seven part. The twenty-four seven, that is the twice daily P V Ts, that is the U As, where they get ten dollars. P V Ts, you get a dollar for the first thirty days, you get a dollar and a half because it's a small fee for being on the twenty-four seven program. So that's where all the twenty-four seven fees that are coming in. Um, those go into a twenty-four seven account, you might say that, right, Cindy? And then they get put back, oh, excuse me, they get put back into the twenty-four seven program on staffing and equipment, kind of a self-pay program. So those fees are kind of taken out of the revenue, what Cindy is saying, that goes back to the county.
Just, even though this, this is ankle monitoring, it's not the location monitoring. Just, even though this, this is ankle monitoring, it's not the location monitoring, it's monitoring for, through perspiration, the amount of. Whatever drug you're after in, in the sweat, so it's a bit of a, there's a time lag in this.
Yes.
There is monitoring.
Yeah, there is a little bit of a lag on there, like say they have to come in, on the scram bracelet, you have to actually come back to the facility, uh, once a week. Plug in, dump the data, so there's a, there's, there is a time lag there if they were drinking, so.
Security, continuous remote alcohol monitor. Security, continuous remote alcohol monitor.
I'll remember that, I'm sure.
What month is it that we typically do those contracts? Isn't that a yearly or some of the?
For the out of county contracts, typically I do that in January, February. What I do is I like to look at the fees that we, that it cost us to house an inmate from the year prior. I like to stay a little bit above that, so we're getting paid. And when I look at that, I take in the complete cost, it costs to run the jail, so. Next year, I'm guessing it's going to be a little bit higher because of staffing, and also because of. Their remodel issues and the pipelining, not necessarily model, but the pipelining and some of the projects that are happening to maintain the jail, so. I usually include those into the price when I figure out the number. I'll share that with you in January, February, when I get those numbers off.
So that'll be interesting at that time, how many of those counties still want to contract with us?
You have a, I just, you talked about scram bracelet, we have a lot of. People that might try to tamper with them, or.
It happens sometimes, not as often as you would think. But yeah, there, there are some tamperers that can handle it, that people will try to put. A piece of salami or something between that and their ankle. There, there are things, and then like you said, the technology and everything, so it's so advanced that I could tell that's not. Human, or that there's a strand wrapping between there, so it is some decent technology in there that.
I heard it was Limburger cheese.
Limburger cheese, okay, that's, that's a new one, I haven't heard that one yet, so, yeah.
So they get a, a notification right away when they had to text that.
When there's a tamper, um, it does send an email right to our twenty-four seven coordinators, and they'll see that there's a tamper. Somebody's messing with it.
I think it's bracelets they can wear out of state also.
Yes, they are bracelets that they can wear out of state, so.
Yeah. It's a little more tricky if they're out of state and can't with it.
Part of that is, we've actually been, we have a few units that we've been kind of testing, to kind of build on the scram bracelet part, where they don't have to come in twice daily PBT. It's called remote breath. It is a, very similar to your cell phone, and it'll have a strong on there. What that does is, it's kind of like our PBT machine that we put in last year, beginning of COVID. This person will take this remote breath unit, they have to pay for five or six dollars, something like that, off the top of my head, per day. And what it does is it actually takes a picture of the person that's PBTing in a video. And then the technology and the software will say that this is not fire. There's an alert here, or this is my air and everything's good, and it'll send back. An email of somebody, PBT's hot or something like that, so, we had somebody that actually. Got put on twenty-four seven program and went to Mexico, we actually used it in Mexico for a couple months, and it worked great down there, so. So technology, it's growing every day.
I guess.
It's just, every six months is something new.
Every six months, it seems like.
Or, and that, that was just a figure, self-motors.
Yep, always seems like there's something new or better, different ways to do things, so.
And more money.
And, and more money sometimes, yes. So, um, kind of building on what Brenda, any, any other questions on the monthly report? You guys got a few things I want to touch base on before we get out of here, so. Brenda kind of talked about some of the projects that are going on, we have a pipelining project that we're actually working on, we bid beginning of the year. Now they're finally here to work on it, they came in yesterday, I got a few pictures, I'll pass around and let you guys kind of see some of the pictures of our pipes. And it kind of surprised me here, we've been having issues with the shower downstairs in our facility, and some of the plumbing. And we had to go in there with the pipeline or people.
And they are plugged up, right?
They're plugged up, well.
You're good.
The, the process is, it sounds like they go in and they de-scale the cast iron pipes, and in my head, and I've watched just a couple videos on it myself. Think of a router bit on the end of a flexible pipe that goes in and de-scales all the furs and all the bad stuff in the pipes. And you'll see some of the stuff that, this is before they went and scaled, half of our pipes are plugged and full of. Debris, yeah, we'll say debris and bad stuff. So hopefully, when we get this done, we'll have.
So people know what we're talking about, we, we, this, this project was to replace, um, basically the sewage pipe throughout the jail, and, um. The, uh, the way that we're doing it though, is as opposed to tearing up the floor and everything in the jail and the walls and whatnot, we're using. Yeah, we took bits on it, and we got, basically, you can, what, what's kind of the state of the art solution is to. Blow a polymer fiberglass sock, after, after it's all cleared out, you get the scale, the gunk out of there, then to reinforce the pipe.
Essentially have new.
That, yeah.
PC type.
Yeah, and it's, so you can just, yeah, basically blow that into the old pipe and create a new pipe within the old pipe.
The benefit of doing this now is, before the pipes completely deteriorate, which we've had a couple that have done that. Uh, before they completely deteriorate, you don't have to be digging up floors or tearing apart walls and whatnot to fix those pipes, so.
Have you had to relocate any prisoners during this?
We.
Part, particular time, or?
Right now, our downstairs, we've had to move everybody upstairs, that's kind of a special pre that our numbers have been down. Hopefully they stay down, so we can continue with our projects and get that all done. Moving them around, really get that done, we have porta potties that we've brought in, and essentially we'll have to have. A jailer that's available to. Take inmates to the porta potties back and forth, and so, a little bit more staffing, and some logistics that are going to be involved with this project as we go forward, so. Uh, next thing, uh, I'm sure Jamie kind of talked about the joint training that we had just over the weekend. We were involved with that, learned a lot of good things, Jamie already talked about it, and I'll continue on. And court security, I think, I think you could just, to the point you're making though, I said, you had law enforcement participating along with search and rescue. Yeah, so that's kind of, you know, that's. We actually had many different agencies that were involved, yeah, uh, worked on a lot of core objectives to try to find out some. Weaknesses and some strong points, and, uh, it's nice to work on those scenarios and stuff before we have a real issue, so. Learned a lot of good things there. Forward, court security, the kind of monitoring at the state level, legislative legislators made up. Court Security Committee at the state level, and they've been working with all the ports, all sixty-five areas in the state. And they're kind of looking at some mandates, and they're trying to work with the counties a little bit. How this is going to look, I don't know how this is going to look going forward, if there's going to be some unfunded mandates, or how this is going to look going forward. I know we're one of the few counties that are in the state that actually had someone in the courthouse that's. We took them steps a couple years ago and remodeled to put someone in there. Just kind of sharing with you guys that this is coming on, I'm going to see if I can get on and be a pilot program with this, so I can help kind of guide and shape. Where this goes at the state level, because my opinion is they can't do a, uh. A state why this is where we got to be, because every courthouse, every jurisdiction is different on how they run things. So there's going to be some things that we're working on there, I'm going to see if we can get on, be a pilot program with that, because we have Dave down there already, running court security. And we have deputies that are in some of the courtrooms on and off, and, uh, so, like, sharing with you guys, I don't know what's going to come of this over the next. Couple of years or year even, just kind of keep you abreast of that, so.
Lee and I heard part of that, um, an individual came in and at our exec meeting and talked about that, and, and there is quite a difference. Of different counties and sizes, and, and you know, it'd be quite a burden on some of them if they would mandate some of these sales. And it, it wouldn't even warrant it because they don't have court that often.
Absolutely, I mean, this is an initiative of the, of the UJ, of the unified court system, based statewide court system, so that's, that's what spoke to me. Uh, county commissioners executive. Yes.
So yeah, we, that would be interesting, it'd be good if you were on there, because I think you have a, a good perspective on some of that.
Good steps to try to fill that gap before we get some mandates and whatnot, so. The next thing is, is like I say, COVID, it's going around, I got several staff, five, six, seven, something like that, that are. Out with it, but lucky we haven't had any inmates that have contracted or got that, still taking a lot of precautions in the jail to make sure that we don't. Get that, any inmates and have an outbreak in the jail. We're, we're taking temperatures, we're masking up, and we're dealing with people, we're still not allowing. People to come into our facility for church and whatnot, so we have, uh, essentially Zoom set up for AA and for church, working around that, so. But it is going around, and. Texting on the other staff members, and we have a bunch of people out, especially when they have a lot of projects going, so.
That's quite a few, actually, at one time.
That's quite a few, yeah, so.
What have you, uh, you know, from on our side, with planning and zoning of this. Medical marijuana issue, have you been involved in any meetings or preparing, prepping for. Any of this, or have you been involved in any of this process, and what have you been doing?
A little bit, I've worked with, uh, Luke, he reached out to me, and kind of got my opinions, and kind of shared kind of what you guys are looking at doing. And the zoning process here, so. Otherwise, working at the state level, we're trying to knock out the legislative committee that's going on here, sharing with our legislators on some of the things that. The sheriffs that we would like to kind of see implemented with the medical marijuana and whatnot, so.
You do realize, and I know I've had the question asked me by several people, why. It's kind of, well, the city of Watertown has three distribution points, County One, and then the. Outlying, the, the outlying municipalities one, and, and, and I've explained to them, it's, it's easier to monitor one. Than ten or to open the door and let everybody, you know, and. And so that's, that's the part that we hope helps you people out, because the burden is going to be on you people, this is, this is a issue that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, like I say, I like the idea of the crawl, walk, run.
Yeah.
Slowly work our way into this, get our feet wet.
I mean, it's, it's kind of, this is a very new thing, I mean, you, you have, you know, we, we have trouble with prescription drugs, prescription opiates. So this is, you know, no, no, this is a bit different than a prescription, I mean, get, you're basically giving people a card and allowing them to prescribe it to themselves, so a little bit different. So they don't go to a pharmacy for this, so, so this, yeah, I totally agree that we should go as slow as the law allows us to go, and I think that's kind of bit. Basically what the discussion was between you and, and Luke, and, yeah, so.
Well, and if recreational ever gets passed or gets to that point, then this is kind of mute.
You mentioned, uh, when you were doing this training, Sunday was a joint training, and having been to so many meetings, you know, runs through my mind. I was going to say, should be a community training or something like that. Joint training is a term that we are becoming accustomed to.
Yeah, yeah, like I say, it was, it was actually kind of nice to get out in one of our smaller communities and work with our, our firemen, our ambulances out there. Um, like I say, we worked through some communication issues with our state radio system and with our. Just with our radio system altogether, as I say, you end up in South Shore, everybody's been there, kind of in a bowl, and like I say, really.
I think I cut you off this morning, when you were just talking about the, you know, during the Jankel. When he did the digital radio, where are we at with our radio system, is, are we current, are we in good shape, or? You know, here a while back, we put a lot of money into it.
Yeah.
Are we current?
Sheriff Slafish and the Cato, you know, which is the E N F office there, most of the fire departments, we use an analog system. An analog system, the reason we do that is back in the, the days when Jankosian, he had the great idea, which is a great idea. To make it a statewide interoperable communication system. They put up towers and, uh, to state trunking system, so. To try to keep the digital, it's digital, let's put it that way, there's not enough towers in the area for all our agencies to run effectively and efficiently. Uh, like I said, there's a water, there's a tower here in Watertown, there's a tower in Summit that. All northeast, for the most part, have to run off, that's Highway Patrol, Grand County, Dual County, Cottington County. Game Fish and Parks, the state road highway maintenance people, in each tower, you can only have two people on, per tower. On your channel per time, the third person doesn't get on, so there's some issues there. Uh, the decision was made before I was even in office to stay with analog, because it works, uh, it's a lot, a lot cheaper, our infrastructure is up and working. So we've stayed with that, and we use the digital as a backup for larger events like this. We've found that the northern half of Cottington County, our state digital system lacks, it, it does not work the best. Especially in South Shore, we, we figured that out, okay, so. Sunday during our, our training, and it, it doesn't work up there, and our guys have known that for years, because we end up having to. Switch different stations when we're in that area to talk back to dispatch, so. At the state level, I've talked to Gary Yeager, he's on the state, night, state. Coordinator, and something to do with the state radios a little bit, and he mentioned that the state wants some local. Dollars to put up another tower up there in the South Shore area, the tune of, just a guestimate of around a million dollars. And that's between Grant County, Dual County, and Cottington County, they were hoping to come up with around a million dollars to put up a digital tower. My opinion is, it's a state system, I don't know why we locals, we putting into that, we've had to spend a lot of money between. Search and rescue and, uh, the sheriff's office to upgrade our radios, because they're doing a new upgrade to the state digital radio system, that's going to be in effect. October-ish of twenty-two, they're doing some testing on it right now, uh, so we've had to upgrade over the last five, six years. All of our digital radios and our radios to make sure that they're up to standards, to stay on that system. We've used a lot of grant funds for that. Same thing with Jamie's office, they've used a lot of grant funds to, Homeland Security funds to be able to secure them radios, so.
So your radios are up.
State compliance, so we can stay until you use the state system, but the state does want a lot of money to be able to put up a tower over there. Kind of looking for some more local dollars, so, I personally don't agree with that, because it's a state system, but.
I thought the state just kind of had some dollars that they were going to put towards that.
I'm not sure if they, because of the COVID thing, if they got some funds or how, how that works.
Well, we, we, we are kind of doing a part with the state system by paying for our own. That's what our role is. Yeah, and we're doing it, so.
That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks Brad, you're fine.
Thank you.
Lot going on down there. Great, we will move on to item number eleven, action to acquire two factor authen- authentication. For county email accounts, so I can't get that out.
I can actually talk.
Okay, all right.
Um, we've been doing that for a while. The two factor authentication on the email, it's something that we've been doing at the sheriff's office for a couple years. Reason you do that is people can hack into your email, and then they can send emails to other people thinking that it's you. The process is really easy, connecting point, this has to do a couple of things, and they set it up, so it goes to a, a phone number or something like that, that's what ours are. So, anytime somebody tries to log into my email. If it's a bad guy or something like that, it sends me a text with a code that I have to be able to put in. So it pretty much limits anybody from being able to hack and get into your email, it's a good thing, it's something that connecting point has been saying that we should do.
Yep, and, and I think if we're going to. Qualify for cybersecurity insurance down the road, these are steps we have to take to make sure that we are. Putting forth an effort, I just didn't think it should be my decision, I've had it done for my office. And, uh, as the employee from Connecting Point told me, it's. It's to deter other people, it's not to be a hindrance for us, and it's very simple. It's, and I just want the board to be the ones to take the action, so I can authorize Connecting Point, and it's covered under our.
Contract.
Contract that we have with Connecting Points, so there's no extra charge.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this or adopt this.
Second by Waterman, yeah, thanks Brad.
And just, just to add to what the sheriff was saying, this is getting to be common practice. Across the board, and it's one of the things that when people, you know, when you have a hack, you know, this is one of the things, it's like, why didn't you have two factor authentication?
Really kind of hack our system to try to see if they can do to get into the sheriff's office network, they, they weren't able to prove good. But they said that was one of the reasons this was being told. Get a lot of things into the network.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we're going to have to prove effort to deter this stuff.
Yeah, well, there was a neighbor in county who ended up getting. Something hacked into there, so that's, that's a mess for them right now, so, I would think this.
Just, so, so just a question, I'm sure. Just, so so just a question, I'm sure. So as far as the practicalities, like if people are looking at the email on their smartphone. Do they, is there a a process for that, or is it just when you're at your desktop in a county office?
You can have your message sent to your cell phone, or you can have it sent to your office phone.
Well, I mean, like.
Or both, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's for the, that's for the authentication text, but but what I'm talking about is say, if I go on my smartphone and I want to see my county, my Cottington.org emails. Every day, will I have to?
You guys are already set up on it. I'm not positive, but I believe when they set up your emails, it was set up that way.
You don't have to do that. You don't have to get that number every day.
But we could, you could set it up so you get through it every time. Just kidding.
Well, or come my flip phone.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. All right, item number twelve, action to acknowledge twenty twenty county safety awards. Cindy has that information.
Um, these were awards that were handed out during our annual conference. They come from the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. And safety benefits, Cottington County was the recipient of a gold level award for the Cottington County Highway Department. And the Cottington County Maintenance Department, and those two departments were also awarded a plat- platinum level. Award, which means that they are actively pursuing and and giving training. To employees to improve safety conditions within the county.
Which helps with our.
Our insurance premium, yes.
I thank those employees.
So I thought it would be action to acknowledge those awards.
All right, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. And then item number thirteen, action to recognize employees with years of service.
Um, so this is something we used to do during our conference, but they kind of have gone away from that and just allowed the counties to do it on their own. So the recognition recognition is for people at twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, and forty-five years. Cottington County only had one employee this year who met the thirty-year mark, and that was Todd Horni, the highway shop foreman. At the highway department.
Motion by Waterman. Second by Gable. Any other discussion?
Thank you for thirty years of service. Does a wonderful job out there.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. And then item number fourteen, action to acknowledge passing of former county employees slash officials.
And these are the people who in the last twelve months have passed that were former county employees. Helen Rischenberg was the highway secretary, Nick Andrews was the lead supervisor, Roger Vanderfoel custodian, Bill Hoff was a weed sprayer. Jack Thomas was a county commissioner, Vernon Kierness was a highway department machinery operator, and Chad Nelson was a deputy state's attorney.
Look for a motion. Motion by Johnson. Second by Gable. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Item number fifteen, action to approve updates to employee personnel policy and procedures manual regarding medical marijuana. And we will have Natalie come up and give us a little explanation at first.
Come on now. I read that a couple of times, and then I had to look again.
These are new copies or the old copies? Hey, man, I think it's okay.
I'm looking for a summary.
I know, right? Yes, sorry.
Is this, if I project the word document you sent a while ago, is this significantly different?
I mean, yes, there's a couple of things there, and I'll point out what it is.
Or we're just, because I.
You can pull it up, yeah. Yeah, go for it.
This is when you sent.
All right, so good morning commissioners. So, um, we are looking to revise the employee handbook. Language that Lee has up on the screen now is some information we received from South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance.
Our insurance carrier.
For a recommendation. Yes, from their recommendation, and they gave us some options on the language. So I looked at that and tried to make it consistent with what your current handbook language is. Um, and just to expand it, obviously, the reason we're doing this, medical marijuana, right? So if you go to page sixteen. This is an update. Um, so the language that was added there, uh, you can see on the screen, it looks like it's showing in blue at the bottom of page sixteen. This was language introduced from them. And so the main point of this, obviously, it's all legalese. But, um, if you have an employee with medical marijuana prescription. Um, they are only permitted to do that, obviously, if it does not impair their ability to do their job. However, there is a zero tolerance policy as it pertains to law enforcement officers. And our highway department because of their CDL certification, so. Um, and if there's anybody else that would be considered in a sensitive position as well, that would not be able to. So that is kind of the language added to that. And then if you scroll down three point one to. Uh, just changing the numbering system to add again that letter E, confirming that. Law enforcement officers, employees fulfilling duties related to a federal contract, DOT positions, and insensitive positions are prohibited from using. Or possessing medical marijuana under any circumstance, regardless of having a valid prescription. And you guys, I know I've heard a lot about this, but the big issues is the conflict between state and federal law at this point, so. Um, okay, so then there's talking about employees' responsibilities. So there's an update on that section. And you can read that language. Again, this is.
To summarize, it's basically.
Their recommendation.
Employees need to show up unimpaired.
Unimpaired, correct.
Just like you, just with other, as it is with other prescription drugs.
Yes, yes, correct. Okay, and then the testing section has been revised. And so there are conditions under which you can test, of course, for any drugs and alcohol, which includes. Medical marijuana. Um, and so the, just changing the language a little bit under there. And the big issue that this came about, I believe, out at your state convention, is that counties are not allowed to do just. Random testing on employees. Um, there's a difference between federal and private. And so the only employees subject to random testing would be those that are operating heavy equipment, the CDL licensing.
What about law enforcement?
Okay, so this is the other issue. This kind, this handbook does not apply at all to law enforcement. So Brad has a separate sheriff's policy that he will get. All of that covered under, so just to clarify that. Um, so the random testing section is what is different than the other previous section that I sent to you, number four. And I did, so this, I did put in there who we utilize, but I think in further hindsight, before you adopt this, I would cross that out. Because it says we, who we utilize of era, and just say a third party, in case that changes in the future. Just say we could change it to like a third party provider. We don't do this ourselves.
Yeah, that, what you're saying there is not on the screen, it's on.
Yeah, it's on the printed copy. Yeah, that's the, that's the difference. I had spoke to Rick the other day to clarify. Um, and then Lori had sent some follow-up information about who we use and how often that is. So I put that in there, and then I'm like, maybe I talked to Becky this morning too. We're like, well, let's not be so specific.
Yeah, make it flexible.
And, yeah, so then all the rest of it is just, I don't know. Additional language on if you're doing the random drug testing, what the drugs are that they're going to test for, what the testing procedure is, what happens if you get a positive result. Um, oh, the one thing we had to kind of fill in the blank from the language at the county or that the. Association sent us was, um, like a couple of places on like who the information is given to. So sorry, if I go, if you go back to three point one, point five on the testing, um, number one, the post offer pre-employment.
Which.
Sorry, page eighteen.
Okay, I see, yeah.
So that one was a, as you see on your screen, it's blank, will be given to blah, blah, blah. So this was filled into department head and human resources. If you want that to go to someone else.
I think that was something that they talked about, that it's pretty specific of just those individuals and no one else. I believe it's kind of how they said that.
You want to keep results confidential, yeah, exactly.
So, yeah. Less is more.
Yeah, right.
So, so you still, so we're still inserting that language, so department headed.
Yeah.
But still understand that it's kept confidential in the personnel file.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, and yeah, just to clarify, I mean, the procedure is if you are going to test somebody. Like it says, it'd be after you make them an offer. So you'd make an offer contingent on passing the testing. But you can't ask them to test before you make an offer, if that makes sense.
What we've typically done now.
Yeah. Um, the other place, sorry, just to draw your attention to a fill-in-the-blank, um. Um, page nineteen, the paragraph that starts reasonable suspicion. The last sentence in that paragraph, this was a, if there is a confirmation. Of like a positive test, um, where, who, who, what, where that information goes again. So again, I put human resources and placed an employee's personnel file.
And that's correct. I believe that's how she specified that.
Okay, good. Okay, and then I'm trying to just double check that we've. Addressed all the other sections.
Would, what did you say, back to the random testing paragraph? Um, is there a number of employee, I'm just thinking that the difference between the versions here.
Yeah, so there's not a number of employees. Apparently, we just put all of the employees in, and then, um, according to what like Rick and Lori said. They pull this out and we may not get anybody, like, it is completely random, like. Spin the wheel, see what happens, I guess.
The wheel, similar to what what they did in the military.
Okay, yeah. Um, so I think, yeah, I mean, you can read through the rest of it. It's. Becky looked this over and thought she was gonna be up here this morning, but, um, she probably got pulled away. Um, the only other change is page twenty-four. Um, three point five in the smoking policy. And that is just including the language and medical marijuana. Which was their recommendation as well.
And Becky looked it over and she was fine with all the revisions.
So you'd still have the tobacco smoking areas outside the, you know, so. It's kind of, we're talking about, what's kind of weird about this paragraph is we're talking, we're prohibiting anything enclosed. And then mentioning the fact that there are designated smoking areas, but those are actually not enclosed. Right?
Sure, yeah.
Well, that's, and it needs to be so far away from, isn't there something?
The exception that I don't think pertains to just the enclosed section. I think it's pertaining to not permitted in any of that.
Facilities and grounds, okay, so, all right.
Yeah.
With a, a distance from the building.
Yeah, so the to- the tobacco smoking areas are staying the same for now, according, based on, based on this, so, which are outside buildings.
Says not be permitted in county buildings, facilities, grounds. That means they can't be on the grounds, right? I know.
I'm sure we'll have some new recommendations.
You you would, I guess.
But I mean, it's still. Well, yeah.
I I don't think it would.
We'll probably take all the sections out that refer to medical and just change them to just marijuana.
Well, actually, actually, yeah. Pers- I think it probably would stay pretty much the same, actually, because you're talking about controlled substances already, so. So just recreational would come off the list of controlled substances. I mean, basically, the idea is you show up to work unimpaired, even if it's prescribed for pain. You know, you don't.
That's what I gathered. This is, this was a might, it's a very, very minor tweaking of, this would be, uh, this would cover the second phase of whatever comes.
And it mirrors, and the the important thing is that it mirrors what our policy was before, we're just inserting now the medical marijuana. So this, this smoking one, though, that's something we maybe, it says in here, it's, um, not permitted in county buildings. Facilities, grounds, vehicles, or enclosed equipment, except that tobacco may be smoked in designated smoking areas.
I would suggest, I'm sure that, I mean, for this language, that's fine. If we want to look at actually where those smoking areas are, that might be a separate discussion with facilities.
But I think, yeah, we, because it says on here, they're not supposed to be doing it on the grounds.
Yeah, except, yeah.
Unless it's a designated area.
So, yeah, we probably need to maybe take a look at that. Okay. All right, with that, does anyone want to entertain a motion to? All right, motion by Gable. I guess Myron made one a long time ago, didn't you? Uh, second by Johnson. Any other additional comments?
I will get this out to the employees, to department heads to share with employees. This, yeah, obviously goes into effect.
Friday, today, well, today, but yeah, that.
I mean, this goes into, but then the medical marijuana goes into it by Friday, so give them a heads up before.
So appreciate your.
I've got enough paper, thank you.
I mean, this has been a fast-moving trade, so for both the zoning guys and for personnel, so thank you for your.
Thank you, Natalie. You're welcome. Did take a little bit of.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. All right, let's move on then to seventeen, approved claims for payment.
Um, claims we have today are salary claims for the month of September. Total salary claims are six hundred and three thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. And that includes employees' wages, matching retirement, health insurance, et cetera.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Item number eighteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
I have nothing for eighteen, nineteen, or twenty.
Thank you.
Public notices, possible form of questions. Does anyone have any thing that you can think of?
Is there an interagency? I don't think there is one this week.
I don't see anything either before next Tuesday, the fifth, that. I mean, of course, the homecoming events, parades, that sort of might all be there, but maybe coming out together. I don't have anything, uh, any old business.
I don't know, it's all business or new business, but I've just, I didn't, I've just parked out on the north side of the parking lot, done.
Yes, done.
Beautiful.
It's all done, strike.
I drove by it the other day and they were, it looked, it was looking good, but I I just didn't, I just parked up from the south side, north side.
With the combination of the asphalt of the street, and now seems to be have alleviated the.
Yes, yeah. Very good. Turned out very nice.
Good.
All right, new business. Anything for the open? And I believe we have a need for executive session under personnel. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Johnson, second by Waterman, all in favor, say aye.
Any, any, no action.
No action, no.